Of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we call the roll, please?
Schmuckel.
Here.
Duhl.
Here.
Agustinelli.
Here.
McCumber.
Here.
Barchef.
Here.
McManus.
Here.
Horn.
Here, all present and accounted for. First item on our agenda is public comment. If any member of the public would like to make a statement, please come to the microphone and if you'd be so kind as to give us your name and address.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Kevin Query. Address is 515 Georgetown Drive, Traverse City, Michigan. And I'm here on, as a member of the Traverse City Curling Club and would encourage the board to vote in favor of the Class C liquor license application that we have in front of the board this evening. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Good evening. My name is Kevin Byrne. I'm at 4421 West Timberwood Drive, Traverse City, Michigan, 49686. I have the pleasure of being the vice president of the Traverse City Curling Club. And we would like to first of all, thank each and every one of you for taking the time out of your schedules to volunteer to do the important work that your organization does. It's really appreciated. The Traverse City Curling Club opened our facility in January of this year. And we quickly realized that our original business plan and model needed to be adjusted because of the incredible amount of activity that we've seen in the building. We intended to have a member's license issued through the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. We quickly learned that was not going to be sufficient for the kind of interest in traffic we were developing at the curling center. So we discussed with our legal counsel withdrawing our membership request, license request, and getting a Class C instead. They urged us to not do that because they didn't want to confuse the Michigan Liquor Control Commission by having a withdrawal and a reapplication so quickly. So we waited until our license was approved, which was two weeks ago. And it was just timing, the way it worked out that this whole issue developed now. So we are here, seems like the last minute, but it's been our business plan all along to approach you for the Class C license. We appreciate your consideration for that.
Kevin, this is just a short thing. There'll be a moment for you to speak to the board on a little more formal basis.
I was not aware that was on the agenda for later.
Sorry about that.
Thank you. I'll go return to my seat.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? All right, we'll close public comment and come back to the board for review and approval of the agenda and statements of conflict of interest. Do we have any conflicts today?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
We have a motion and support to approve the agenda as presented. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Item three is the consent calendar.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with in one board motion without discussion. Any member of the board, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed therefrom and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single board action adopting the consent calendar. Minutes, August 8th, 2023, recommend approval. Bills from the general fund, $102,937,7 dollars and 17 cents, recommend approval. Consideration of contractors change order number three to Elmer's for Cedar Run Water Main Extension, recommend approval. Consideration of contractor's application for payment number four, final to Elmer's for Cedar Run Water Main Extension, recommend approval. Consideration of Cedar Run Water Main Extension closeout and turnover documents, recommend approval. And consideration of issuing La Fraina Road mid-block crossing notification to Grand Traverse County Road Commission, recommend approval.
Is there any member of the board who would like to remove anything from the consent calendar for discussion? Is there any member of the public who would like to remove anything from the consent calendar? Our staff? I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Make a motion that we approve this consent calendar.
Support.
We have a motion and support to approve the consent calendar. Are there any questions or comments? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Barchef?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Duhl?
Yes.
Agustinelli?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
And Corn.
Yes. Motion is approved. Next, is items removed from the consent calendar, and we have none today. And then correspondence, and we have no correspondence. We will move on to reports. We have an MMR report.
Hello. Been a while since I've seen you all. I hope you've had a good summer. Our summer has been incredibly busy, especially during Cherry Fest. Our run numbers at that time almost doubled out here in Garfield Township. August was, August has started off a little calm, and we'll see how it goes. But July, we were up over 400 calls for service. And the majority of those being sick person, which is a very general classification for different things to fall into. As far as staffing goes, we are actually increasing our staffing. We're at 110 employees now. I have quite a robust part-time group, which is fantastic. These guys are the ones that are going to school, but they're working on the weekends, they're working on the holidays when no one else wants to work. So I've been very excited to have those. Garfield Township, we see ambulance up here is a new ambulance, new, brand-new off the line. The crews have been in it for about three weeks now. They love it. It runs nice and smooth. It smells okay still. It's great. So we've had some really good improvements here. Still working on recruiting some paramedics. I'm happy to say we are fully staffed EMT-wise. And if I could find about four more paramedics, we'd be sitting golden. I have one taking her paramedic testing at September 8th, so we're crossing our fingers and toes for her. At this time, I don't believe I have any other information for you, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Any questions? You're good.
You guys make it easy. Thank you so much. I do apologize, I need to bow out for some family stuff, but if there's any questions, please feel free to reach out.
Thank you.
Next is the Grand Traverse County Commissioner's report.
You only have me tonight. Lauren Flynn, County Commissioner, District 2. I have a few things to go over. First of all, with concerning the pavilions, I know trustee Eskenali asked me that. Did I get that right?
No. Agustinelli.
Agustinelli, okay. Agustin. Thank you. One, you know, was asking questions. We did add it to the agenda at our last meeting. We have asked both administration as well as the board of the pavilions to come to us with a plan on creating a more solvent plan for the pavilions. We really value the pavilions as a gem in our community, so we'd like to see that better run, to be honest with you, and making sure good decisions are being made. So that is coming forward. Scott Seifert, Commissioner Scott Seifert for District 8, was appointed as a county board liaison to the road commission. So we'll have a little bit more information coming there. And we also agreed to enter into the lawsuit, the nationwide lawsuit for PFAS. So that's going to be similar to how we've entered in the lawsuit for the opioid settlement, which we also agreed to move forward, continuing with those as well. So that's new things coming forward that you'll be hearing about. And as soon as I have the task force, opioid task force, meeting tomorrow, so I'll have more to report back on that next time I'm back here. Any questions? I'm happy to answer.
There was a recent Supreme Court decision about the settlement for the opioid Purdue Pharma. And did that put everything on hold?
I don't think so, because I know that we've already received a portion. It's just deciding how, it's more so that we know we're going to receive it, it's just going to be, we don't know how the payout's going to be. And it's going to be over 10 to 18 years, so that's where it's confusing. So we want to make sure we have a sustainable plan to use that money wisely and efficiently.
Perfect. Thank you.
Denise?
Recent article in the Record Eagle about the pavilions. Did you see that, about them not having enough money?
Yeah, that's what, that's what we were just, that's what I was just discussing, and that's what we put on the agenda as of last Wednesday.
Yeah, my question to you, so basically the county is paying for the pavilions right now, and they're not making any money?
Right.
Okay.
And that's not something all nine of us were very happy about. So that is something that we're having administration and legal counsel, and we've asked for the, our appointees to come and kind of explain what's happening.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but it's because they're not being reimbursed, correct?
Right. They do have reimbursements for Medicaid that they have not received back for, but this was a decision that we, we had thought that they were going to come and ask for money from us, and that did not. And the treasurer, our treasurer does have it handled, and we are going to be paid back. It's just, we'd like to know what their long-term plan will be.
I understand that, but according to the paper and the article that I read, that by April, they'll be out of that money already, and they'll be back in the same position.
That's why we're wanting them to create a plan, to make sure that they know that that's not appropriate running of the pavilions in our eyes.
Any other questions or comments for our commissioner?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the Grand Traverse County Road Commission report.
Good evening, board members. I'm Alan Lehman. I have just, just a few things on there. Most of you probably know that the South Airport and Silver Lake Road intersection project is started. Most of that work is going to be done after Labor Day. Most of the traffic delays will be then. If you can avoid that area, do, should be wrapped up early, early October. The crosstown artery transit study work we're doing is ongoing. We have had some, there's been some information, people are looking for stuff, maybe second guessing some of our decisions that have been coming forward the last four or five years. We're proceeding with a real high-quality consultant we have and trying to follow the process as best we can with their guidance. And, you know, I personally believe that the community needs another crosstown avenue. And I, I've been told that most of you on the board are, are of the same agreement. So there are always people saying no. There's been people saying no since 1983, but it hasn't made any of the problems go away. The, the emergency response times, if we ever have a disaster on South Airport Road, will be just horrible. We're really, the, the commission is pretty focused on seeing this through as best we can. You've probably heard we're going to start a new garage in Kingsley soon. We have asked the county to bond that for us because they can borrow the money for us at the lowest possible rate. And I think we're maybe 15 days into that, and after 45 days, we can proceed. So we're planning on doing, we're doing that. The garage that's there was from 1950. It's not anything to be very proud of. It's, it's past its time, and we'll dispose of that property when we're, when we're, when we have the new building up and running, which, maybe 18 months. It's been a long thing. And that's all I have for you tonight. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Lehman?
Just a comment. So a couple of meetings ago, I brought up a concern that people had on North Long and Zimmerman with traffic. And you were really quick to get on that and do an assessment and fix some things. I think you changed the traffic pattern and a few other things. So thank you for your quick response to that concern.
Thank you. We're, we're working on it. We understand that some of these, we, we have also started, we've tasked our engineers, which is going to happen a little bit with the MPO that you, your, Chuck, you're the representative on that for the board, right? The Metropolitan Planning Organization is going to look at some of the corridors and where, all the way around town, where, where the, most of the traffic comes in through the, through certain corridors, which like we talked about, the North Long Lake Zimmerman. There's areas that we're, that we're going to work on all the way around town. And with the 11 or 13 governmental entities we have in the MPO, we're going to, we're going to focus on the best way to do these one by one. And make the things that the community thinks important, we'll proceed with those first. And it's really a long-term thing. This isn't, this isn't something that's going to be solved in a year. You know, the traffic congestion around town is not going to be solved in a year or two, but we're, we're making great strides. And I do think that there's some, there's some bureaucracy that comes with this that I'm not super comfortable with. But it's, it's the only way we can get additional funding to do long-term planning and real improvements, not just maintenance of the roads we have. There's federally, there's federal money available for corridor work, but it's quite a process to get there.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last is the supervisor's report. Lot going on in the township still. We have a lot of development. We have a lot of, lot of potential developments. We will have at our next meeting, another resolution for the MPO. The resolution that we passed was not the official resolution that.
For what?
For the MPO.
Oh, okay.
That MDOT wants, so it's a technicality, but we'll be fine. Other than that, I've been enjoying the summer.
Embarrassed.
That concludes reports. We will go on to unfinished business. And the first item is consideration of recommending approval for a Class C or tavern liquor license to the following applicants. Number one is High Tops' request. Number two is the Curling Club. And number three is the Two Brothers Dog Park Bar. The, I'd like each of you to, if you would, present to the board, and we can have a little question and answer session. And after we've heard all three, we'll give the board members a chance to discuss it and make a decision. So in that regard, the first one we would like to hear from is High Tops.
Philip Beeler, 7525 Cedar Run Road. I think I'm just going to recap on the original. I don't think anything's changed. One was the longevity of the company. I planned on doing this for many years. I was originally wanting to do it when the old South City Limits building was up. Fortunately, I didn't have the money for it at the time. There was also a, Mr. Barchef, about our training.
History.
Training history. We don't have, we have the training history, maybe not enough. We have other people that are actually putting it together and that are going to work for us to run the business too, that are licensed and to, for the staffing and everything. Another one was the funds. I have a proof of funds, if anybody needs a proof of funds. Just, you know, secure you can't take my word for it. I think we need something in this town like that, something that's 24 hours at some point with staffing. I think things have kind of, COVID has taken a lot of things out, but I also think they were declining the last 10 years. And I think would benefit to have something like that. Of course, everything's.
New, so what we wanted to do.
I read it, yeah.
Okay.
I just want a picture.
Nope, keep going.
I just think it's, it would uplift some things. I think there's other people that work opposite schedules as us, you know, for a 24-hour restaurant. I know a lot of things can benefit from it. Everybody needs to make money.
Will provide jobs.
The main purpose is that I'm coming up with this isn't about money as much as, I'm putting almost half a million dollars into something that I just think we need, so. There's any other questions?
For instance, if we were going for the 24-hour thing, like I had a client and she got out of work late, I don't know what she did, but she couldn't even go anywhere and get something to eat. She said she stopped for the gas station. They didn't even have hot dogs, so, you know, to get people at work late, to be able to get something past 10 o'clock at night would be nice.
But this wasn't just a thought-up idea. It's something we've kind of been putting together for a long time, so. That being said.
Any questions for Beeler?
Thank you.
All right, thanks, guys.
Okay. Number two is the Curling Club. Welcome back.
I'm sure you remember me. I was almost done. The, the license, what that, what would that allow us to do is, we built that curling center with the intention, as you know, of hosting national and international competitions. And it'll, and if we have a member's license, we're limited to 12 daily permits from the Michigan Liquor Control Commission to hold events. That would force us to pare back on what we want to offer the community in business for the shoulder seasons. Everybody comes up here in June, July, and August, it's a no-brainer. But the other nine months of the year, we could use some, some help, and that's what the club aims to do, is to be able to fill some hospital, some, whoa, not hospital rooms, some hotel rooms and restaurants. So that's really all I wanted to say at this point. I will answer any questions that any commission members have.
I like, I read all the ones that came in, but I did have a question regarding, so you have a machine that distributes the beer?
That's correct.
So it just distributes beer only?
Well, it can, it can distribute whatever you put.
In it?
Behind it.
Okay.
Our original intention, for instance, was to offer wine and ciders and actually a tap for non-alcoholic beer. The wine has gone away because of COVID. Everybody stayed home, and you can't get kegs to put wine in. There are some ciders available. And the non-alcoholic beer, the same problem was COVID. That all went away, and so we can't find anybody right now that's producing in barrels a non-alcoholic beer.
So you don't have anybody there that mans this? It's a self-serve?
Well, the way it works is every member will have a, an RFID card. And then you tap a reader on the machine, and it does certain things before it will activate. It assures you're a member of the club. It assures you're over 21 years old. And it assures you, you have not, you have not purchased more than 32 ounces of alcohol in the last 24 hours. You then select what beverage you want to buy, pull the tap, and we charge your bank account immediately.
Okay.
So we don't have to have a bartender on site, and we don't have to pay somebody to count cash. We can, 100% of cash never makes it to the bank. It just doesn't happen.
I just have one quick question with that.
I'm almost done.
Okay.
The security of this is every time that those taps are available for use by our members, there is a person who is Michigan Liquor Control Commission TIPS-trained for security. We have right now 20 people who are already approved by the MLCC class and 15 more in process. So that cannot operate if there's nobody supervising the sale of the beverages.
Okay, so, so you, they guarantee that you're the person who has the card, that, that is your card?
Yes.
Okay, so they stand by the machine as you're there? Okay, that was my question.
Yes, it's, it's very closely monitored.
I, because anybody could take anybody's card, that's what I'm, I'm saying.
Well, if you let somebody else use your card, you're going to get kicked out of the club. That's just a ground rule.
But people could lose their card by accident and what?
There's no foolproof, perfect way of doing this anywhere.
Okay, that's what I was just.
In a grocery store, you can have an ID swiped, so.
That's what I've always.
We're doing, we're doing the best we can, you know?
Okay.
Thank you.
I have two questions. My first one that has to do with those, the card reading system. So when you have a tournament come in, do they each get a card? The, the people coming? How do you, how do you plan to?
That same tip person, that same tip monitored person will make sure, they'll check all the driver's licenses of anybody who buys a beer. We'll give them wristbands to wear to show that are over 21. They don't have to show it every time. They just have to show the license one time to get a wristband.
Okay, so they're not using the card system then?
No, they're, no, they won't.
For tournaments?
That's for members.
Oh, okay. And then my next question is, is there a plan to make this a bar open to the public to come view curling so that the whole public could come? Or is the intention to always keep it just a club? And, because if there's a tournament, I would think the public would want to come in and get a drink and watch the tournament. Is there any plans to get away from the card system?
For instance, in April, in April, when we had our Bonds Spiel, which is a tournament, we invited the public to come in, and there was a significant amount of people who came in and watched the curling. We had one-day licenses for all days of that Bonds Spiel. Very few people of the public purchased any, any alcohol beverages, even though we were licensed to sell it at that time.
Okay.
So yes, that, we would still have public invited to the tournaments and the national championships and international championships that we host, yes.
So with this system, if you have public invited, how are the public going to get access to that?
And again, they would just show their driver's license. Like if I'm the person in charge, I'm TIPS-qualified to do that. I would ask to see their driver's license before they purchased anything. We'd give them a wristband to signify that they're over 21, and then they can purchase.
And how many of these are you going to have available? Is it going to be one, 20, 50?
Well, right now, we've got 20 people certify, or have passed the certification test, and another 15 are in process.
I'm talking where they dispense from. How many of the dispensers?
Oh, it's a 10-head system. There's 10 varieties on the, on the system.
Molly?
Yeah, so a little bit of follow-up on Chloe's here. So you said that when people came in, they really weren't buying much alcohol. We want to make sure that this Class C license lets as many people buy alcohol as we can do. We only have one. So how many people do you think outside of the club license would buy alcohol there if you had a Class C? I mean, do you, do you think you would have? You're kind of telling me that they really don't buy it when they're coming in to watch.
It doesn't mean they can't be enticed to. We didn't, we didn't want to make the initial events that we held be for the intent of coming in and having a drink. We wanted to expose the game of curling to those markets. As time goes on, I'm sure that will expand into a more well-rounded entertainment-type situation. As to give you an idea for a guest and a number, I would hate like the devil to offer a number because I simply, I can't with any authority say we've only been open since January. We really can't tell you that answer.
About one more?
Sure. I'm not going anywhere till you're done.
Okay. In your dialogue here, you mentioned that if something happens to the Curling Club and you go away, that you will come back to the town board for approval of transferring this Class C license?
If, if by chance something should happen and the Curling Club is no longer using that license, we would escrow it. I don't think you can take it back. We would escrow the license and then seek your input on how to dispose of it, as opposed to putting up for auction at the public market for however much it could be sold for. Then you lose control over where it goes. It could go to Flint, it could go to the Upper Peninsula, it could go anywhere. Our intention with that clause in my narrative is to make sure you understand we're going to keep that license here.
And, and that would be, I think, what most of the board members would appreciate. We've lost several of those to the city and other places, so. Thanks.
Steve?
In your comments of the public coming in, can they come in at any time or only during competitions?
Typically only during competitions. Our club has one paid employee, it's our executive director. The rest of us that do all the activities there, maintain the ice, maintain the building, do all the grounds work, everything else, we're all volunteers. So it's very difficult to staff a building during regular business hours with volunteers. We don't really want to become a typical bar, per se, but we do need the flexibility to offer beverages more frequently than 12 times a year.
And then, what was, oh, I just lost my train of thought.
Sorry?
When you had mentioned that the members have the cards and it regulates 32 ounces, is the person there monitoring that? What if they gained 16 ounces before they came there and got another 32? Is there somebody monitoring that? And then the next part of that question is? And then the next part of that question is, when you ID the people and you give them a wristband, who monitors how many they buy for them? Because they don't have a card that shuts it off.
The TIPS people will be, are trained in the TIPS program to spot people who have had too much to drink, just like a bartender is trained. It's time to cut them off. And you can control, you can only, anytime you try to set up controls, there's always a way to circumvent it. So we have to bear that in mind. No system is perfect. But we expect that we will have more, when we have bigger crowds there, we will have more than one person on staff supervising and watching what's going on.
Denise?
To follow up on that, too, I was just thinking the same thing as Steve was. As a bartender, you can watch, but let's say I'm there, and I've had the two or three that I'm already with, but Molly goes up and gets me one. How are you going to monitor that?
Well, just by watching what's going on, just the same way it is in a bar. If you go to a bar and you go up to the bartender and you take two drinks and you go back into a part where it's not visible, you can swap out drinks and you can give them to people who maybe don't need anymore. That's no different here. But what we're going to try to do is more active and vigilant in preventing that, by having more than one person on duty at a time.
Any other questions?
So for your tournaments, do you plan on expanding the sales outside of this little machine where you actually have a counter and a server?
Well, what we did in April was we set up a table, and we set up a bar there on the table, and then the bartenders behind there poured all the drinks for the people who came up. So it wasn't self-serviced during our tournament in April. We may continue with that, or we may change it. We haven't got that planned down yet.
Thank you.
Well, I do have one more quick question. So you do have some real estate in the area that I think you're developing as well, expanding? Would this license just be tied to the Curling Club? Or would the other areas that you're developing be developed in such a way where you would utilize this?
When you become a licensed facility, the inspector who did our building told us this, they usually start with the four walls on the exterior of your building, and then when you build out, they will shrink the area down to the space that the operation takes up. They started off with our licensing because we had our demising walls up already with just the space that we have. So it does not go beyond the space of the curling center itself. So the other parts, the other tenants in the building will not be able to sell alcohol.
Okay, and have you guys discussed that or even thought about doing that at some point?
The interested parties that are looking at the space, we're negotiating leases right now. None of them are in the type of business that that would be appropriate. And we've not had anybody approach us. You can't share a license. That's the best way there is to lose it.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
And now Two Brothers Dog Park Bar.
How's everyone? I do have, oh, it looks like they are colored. Well, thank you. Awesome. So we provided a summary document that talks a little bit through our business, but I'll start with kind of who I am and how I came to this community, and then we'll jump into it. So my name's Eric Engel. I've lived here in Garfield Township for seven years. I live at 1412 Northwest Silver Lake Road. I moved up here earlier on to be an executive for Hagerty, and I just fell in love with here, and I decided I'm just going to stay here. And luckily, remote work is easy, and I plan on staying here as long as I can. So that said, when we were down visiting in Kentucky and North Carolina, we ran across the concept that kind of blew my mind, which was a dog park bar. So you take the concepts of a dog park, some membership mechanisms to provide trust and safety and validation, and then also, you know, the same kind of community gathering as a cafe or bar, and you put it together. And what I noticed was how amazing it was around the instant community. People of all different types of generations, all different types of professions, all bonding out of their same shared love for canines. It was awesome. Like, you take a little bit of alcohol plus dogs and like instant conversations, instant connection, instant community, and I was just absolutely floored. So after that, I came back home, and we decided, hey, let's, been here for seven years, let's give back to the community. Let's build a place for people who love dogs and have that same sense that they have of love for their dog. And all of those people have the same problem, which is when they want to go out and work at a coffee shop or go out and socialize with their friends, they leave their best friend at home. And then they all feel that guilt of like, well, I'm out for hours, but my best friend isn't with me. So this was a big aha moment of we can solve that. We can give people a place where they can socialize with their friends, but then not feel that guilt anymore and be there as their dog socializes as well. So that's the origination of the concept. It's fairly new. I would say it's still novel. There's about a few dozen in the U.S. There is one in Grand Rapids named The Pack. We listed them, I think, on page two. There is one opening up in Detroit, and then there's one opening up in Chum's Corner. So pretty close. We do differ quite a bit from the one in Chum's Corner. The one in the Chum's Corner is going to be an outdoor space with food trucks next to the park there, the baseball park. We are going to take a different approach where we have an indoor space focused on providing a great environment for our community during our long winters. So you don't have to choose to sit out in the open dog park in the long winters. Instead, come have a coffee, let your dog run around, and talk with your community. Any questions? I'm happy to give additional context, or we can dive in specific areas.
One question. I noticed that this says something about memberships. Do you have to be a member to be there in order to go in there to have a cocktail?
So you have to have a membership to bring your canine friend in, but you don't need a membership for a dog or without a dog. What you do need to do is you do need to sign a waiver, so we can protect everyone in the community in case of any incidents. So if you don't have a dog, anyone is welcome to come and enjoy a drink, watch the dogs, enjoy a cozy place. If you bring your dog, you do need to purchase a membership. It could be a day membership, monthly, or annual.
I'm sorry?
No, go ahead, please.
Your membership with your dogs, you have to bring their records to make sure that they've been vaccinated?
Yep, yep. So during the, either in-person or online, you have to go through the signup process. So there's a set of standards, usually five or six different vaccines that we require, Borodadell and a few others. Just to again, protect that community and our children, fluffy children. And then as well as you have to vouch that there's been no previous incidents and conflict with that. That's another benefit of the space is, you know, we take our dogs to the Silver Lake Park a lot, but there's always a risk of there's someone that doesn't have that same sense of diligence in watching their dog. And it's always a little awkward, and that just happens. So we can create a place where we have those ground rules, where you have to be respectful and you have to be responsible, or you're just not welcome as part of that community, as a dog owner.
Chris?
Can you walk us through how alcohol is served? How do you monitor the consumption and how do you ensure that people under 21 don't get it?
Yep, so based on our discussions with the health department, we have a much more stringent process for delivering liquor and food to people because we have to separate it out from the dogs. So our space is a three-section space. We have a fixed barrier in a space where we're selling food and beverages. So if you want to buy a drink, you have to separate yourself from the dog and enter the separate space, so we can be compliant with health code laws. So it'll be very, very much like a bar, but at the same time, unlike a bar, it'll be separated from the noise and all the chaos that can create confusion when you're serving or even assessing someone being served. One interesting tidbit is we did, we've been working very closely, and I think on one of the pages, page five or so, it talks about the team we've been working on to bring this concept to life. And we've been working very closely with the SBDC on this, because a lot of the question was, how much of our community can enjoy the space? Like, yes, we want to make sure it's open for everyone in the community, but it's extra special if you have that furry friend. So looking at 2020 census data from Michigan as well as Grand Traverse and Garfield Township, we're forecasting around 7,000 households within our target demographic of income that will be part of this community that would own dogs. And then additional people who do not own dogs.
David Wilson, 545 Riverine. You can tell he's the fun one in shorts. Just to answer your question more directly, a little bit more, though, we're going to have a separation between park staff and bar staff. So bar staff will have, will go through more training, including senior and more junior bar staff, right, bar backs or whatever, that will have certifications and licensing, and they will not be allowed to handle the dogs and accept emergencies or following health protocol. So park staff will not be serving. They will not be interacting with the alcohol in any way. They'll be handled by trained bar staff or managers. I don't know if that answered?
It does, yep.
I guess I have one question. That's kind of direct, but...
That's okay.
How much is your business's success dependent on this license?
Yeah, 54% of our gross revenue is from liquor.
Okay, because I feel like the concept could work without alcohol.
It could, yep.
And it could still be fun?
Yep, it could.
As a good cafe?
What's tricky for us is we have over 11 staff because we have to staff a bar and a park. And we want to make sure that we're staffing the park, not just for liability, but more importantly, for the community. We want trained people there, so if they see aggression between dogs, if they see awkward behavior, that they can step in and bring them to the timeout area or ask them to separate. So we have a lot of labor to cost or labor to cover. You know, our membership costs are less than 10% of our revenue, so membership barely covers anything. If anything, it's just a liability mechanism for us to ensure that liability and compliance. So yeah, I do hope that coffee can support a lot of it, but I don't think without liquor that we can support the staff we need, unfortunately. And that's part of it, too, is we're, one more note is that we're requesting a tavern license. And the reason for that is we don't want to serve liquor. Like, we want a safe community where people can enjoy a drink, but we don't want people inebriated to where you're creating risk for that community. So we specifically want to stay away from that. You know, wine's bad enough. We'll have to police that very closely. So that's the rationale for that request.
And to be clear, tavern, we're looking at because it's beer and wine, as we've discussed with lawyers. So beer, wine, cider, no hard liquor.
So the Class C license, is there a tavern license available that we have, or is it just all Class C?
A tavern license is a Class C.
It is a Class C.
Yeah, the Liquor Control Commission is hard to figure out. Trust me.
On that same note, is the club license, I mean, like, because this is a club with a membership?
Right.
Would that be something that would work for them, or is that a Class C, too? Because I thought that was separate, that's why they are here.
I know the Curling Club has gone through a long process to get their club license. It's not an easy give-me. I don't know.
So I wondered if that would work for them, if they have a membership fee, but then only their members could purchase it? What'd you say?
That's a future business.
Oh, yeah. But they would get 12 events a year, right? That they could serve to the public? But you're saying that's hard to acquire?
That mean like with a tavern license, there's only the members can buy?
That would be with a club license.
Yeah, okay.
But they could buy any day, any time.
So they couldn't serve to the public then, right?
Correct.
Okay.
12 times, though, with a special permit.
Right, a year?
And those are just one-day licenses?
Yeah.
Not per event?
One day. One thing to note is...
Steve, do you have a question?
Yeah, so this, so your concept, what you're explaining is members would be people that bring dogs in, days, month, year, whatever you're going to do. Then you're going to have a separation area that's going to serve food and drinks or alcohol, coffee, whatever, that can observe the dogs.
Correct, yep.
So it's along the concept of what I do for a living with our horse farm. When we go to larger horse shows, the larger ones have VIP and patrons lounges that we can go sit in to have a drink, coke, coffee, alcohol, beer, wine mix, whatever, to watch the horse show. Other horse shows I go to, they have bars all around the arena selling alcohol when you're sitting there watching the horse show. And I never ever see anybody inebriated. It's more of an enjoyment item. It's never not there at those shows, and the reason, I think, is because it's probably over 50% of their income, is what I'm thinking. So I kind of see your concept, and the horse people are already doing this. And not many people ride them, but they'd rather watch them. Me, I'd rather watch a dog than own a dog, but that's just me. I have horse hair, but not dog hair. Laney's different. Laney has dogs. So I don't, I kind of understand your concept. It's interesting.
Two more points I'd like to share. The first is, we did talk to a liquor broker, and there is a license for sale within the area. It currently goes for $115,000. So if we were to try to acquire it, we would have to find investors to cover it. So I'm currently investing $300,000 in the renovations and the build-out. If we wanted to find another 115, I'd have to take the journey of trying to find an investor. Originally, we tried to find three investors because we wanted to build instead of renovate, and it was just very difficult to find in the current climate. So that's the first point. The second point I wanted to make is, part of our vision is not only providing a place for the community, for dog lovers, but also providing a place for people who work in that industry to come and offer their services as well. And not offer leases, because they're new, they're just trying to get off the ground, but instead, offer very conservative revenue sharing for them. So we can grow with their business, they can use the space, we can all bring dog lovers together. So that's groomers, trainers, local artists, musicians. I've noticed a large cropping in our recent local art shows of people who are making dog toys, dog bowls, dog accessories. So giving those people free shelf space.
Have you had any conversations with your broker about club licenses?
No, nope. They're not. It's worthwhile looking into.
That would only be limited to members, though, wouldn't it?
Yes.
But they, again, can you have a one-day member, a five-day member? I don't know how a club license is restricted.
Okay, I see what you're getting at, yeah.
And down in North Carolina, where they have a dry county, you can get a one-day club license.
So that would be like a situation if they got a club license, but I, as an individual, wanted to just go in there, I could buy a one-day membership and then get served at that time?
I don't know about Michigan. I know in North Carolina, you can do that.
He's saying that's a possibility, but Michigan could be different.
Yeah, okay.
We are the Wolverine state.
Yes, we are.
Not peaches.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, gentlemen.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Some thoughts? Mr. Barshif, would you like to start out?
Sure, why not? I appreciate everybody coming and explaining your business plan and adding a business, proposing businesses to our township. I'm a little biased in the fact that I've worked with the Curling Club in the past, in my current position, and I've actually done investigations as a detective sergeant. And part of that is making sure that they have a good plan to keep alcohol out of people who are under 21 years of age and having a good plan to monitor activities, to make sure somebody doesn't get hurt, so it's big about public safety. And I had a relationship with them going back when they first started at Center Ice. As a matter of fact, I met Don out there to walk through their game plan, you know, how are they going to ensure public safety? So, you know, with the other business plans, I feel like the one at the mall is more expansive in alcohol consumption and 24/7. Greater access has more potential to create public safety concerns. The dog park, it's a really cool concept. You know, we have many dog parks throughout the township as well that people can access and use that if they choose to do that. I've always felt that you don't always have to add alcohol to have fun. And, you know, when you look at us being the number-two county in the state of Michigan for liquor tax dollars, you hear about the pines on Division Street. Everybody who's living in there has, you know, an alcohol problem, substance use problem. So we have a community that has great problems. So I feel like when I have an opportunity to make a decision, that's not going to contribute to that, is my thought process. So I feel like I would support the Curling Club because it's, we, there's the public that can access that, but it's at a lower-scale level of consumption and it's, you know, it doesn't create too public safety issues to the extent that the other proposals would in my mind, from a public safety background. So that's just my two cents. But again, I come from a law enforcement background in public safety. But again, I come from a law enforcement background in public safety.
How about our treasurer?
So, I was trying to look for solutions for everybody, of course, but the way that I kinda see, I was looking at it more of like an economic growth cuz to me, you want the, the biggest benefit to the community as far as the economic impact and for the most residents to be able to take advantage of this license. So, to me, the success of the Dog Park Bar and the High Tops largely depends on this license, whereas I feel like the Curling Club is gonna be successful no matter what. Whereas the Dog Park Bar and the High Tops need this to operate the business. I also really like the idea of renovating the mall, as I said last meeting. I had spoken with Shannon, the property manager, who's sitting out there, and she said that area, the Jonathan B Pub Space was just torn apart and she was worried about a tenant even wanting to come in because they would have to put a lot of money into fixing it up. And here we have someone with a building background who could come in, remodel it, fix it up. And they're not just gonna take up that space, but multiple spaces in the mall, which I feel like our mall needs. And so, to me, just based on the biggest benefit, the most residents who are gonna be able to use these licenses, to me, it would be the Dog Park or the High Tops. That's just how, how I view it, I guess, but I wasn't, I didn't have a public safety background that Chris has, but it sounds like they all kind of have, I mean, normal laws and stuff they have to follow in order to keep it under control, but that's just me. I don't know, that didn't make it any easier for anybody, but.
How about Steve?
So, I mean, I just wrote down some key words. High Tops, it's a new idea, it's a new concept, I'm a little concerned about the location. I will, I will say hidden behind the mall, a little bit. Chloe's concept of them building off of this and, and gaining more is true. It's also the same with the Dog Park, we go out to eat a lot, my boys are always on us to go to B Dub's or call Denise and go or do something different. I know, I don't see a public input when we go. I think those are the late night bars that are serving and not controlling what they're doing. I think you're gonna get that with anything, I think a lot of people, when they go out, we have a ton of wineries, we have a ton of distilleries and people respect that, they wanna go there to try it, maybe buy it, take it home. So, I don't look at the alcohol thing as being a bad thing. I don't know of any restaurants in town that I wouldn't go to cuz I think they're too rowdy. The Curling Club, great concept, it's established, it's proven, they've, can get their hands on a certain type of liquor license. I'm a little concerned on their serving technique, is what I wrote down. I would rather see this, I think, go to a full bar type operation, which would gain possibly more input. And then the Dog Park thing, hell, I never thought about it. But when they was talking about it, first thing popped in my head is horse shows, it's exactly what we do when we're at the bigger horse events. And there, again, I don't see problems there at all, ever, and been doing that for twenty-five plus years. So, the concept's cool, and again, would create a new position, more people, Dog Parks are popular as heck. You won't see me there with my dog, but.
Cuz you don't have one.
Cuz I don't have one. It never will.
Maybe with your horse.
I could bring my horse there, yeah. So, that's my input, I, I, those are just key notes that I wrote down. Not really weighing either way and not a hundred percent sure on the class C for any of them, I don't know.
Ms. Gostinelli?
Yeah. On the Dog Park, I think they have other options, think they can do a club license. It doesn't sound like they wanna have a whole lot of drinking there anyway. And, and it's, it's the plan that is the farthest out. Everybody else, the Curling Club is already established, the High Tops, I mean, they're moving along with theirs. So, I'm, I'm thinking of all, all three of these, that the two brothers would be the least likely for me right now. On the other two, I guess I could go with either of them. I like the idea that the Curling Club is there. I like the idea that they have included input from the township. If something happens and that liquor license is put up on the shelf, they can come back to us and we can help them out, try to keep it in the township. We won't get another one for seven years, eight years.
Nine years.
Before we have an opportunity to do this again, so of the three, I think I'd go with the Curling Club.
Ms. D?
Okay, here comes good cop, bad cop, right? My whole concern is a class C liquor license is a full liquor license. The Curling Club is not offering full, nor is the Dog Park offering full. They're gonna do beer and wine and spirits and ciders. We're looking at a class C full liquor license that serves liquor, and two of these are not gonna serve liquor. So, I am strongly for High Tops getting it, because they're the ones that are gonna be serving the liquor. These are hard to come by, you know, if we can get tavern license or club license for the other two. But when you, I mean, we have families that aren't interested in curling and aren't interested in dogs, but they can go to High Tops and have dinner and a cocktail. I'm looking for the residents, out for the residents here in Garfield Township. And this is a full bar liquor license, and that's why I, I'm strongly for High Tops.
Ms. McManus?
I think they're all great concepts, quite frankly. I love the Dog Park, my dogs come to work with me every day. I think the Curling Club is a great organization as well, but I agree with Denise that it is a class C license, it's full liquor. My concern is the location of the High Tops. I know it's a great, but every restaurant that's gone into the Grand Taurus Mall has, has failed. I don't know why, you know, I don't know what the business is, if it's the location or why, it is a concern of mine. So, but I agree, they're the only ones that are going to serve full liquor, so. I mean, I still don't know which way I'm gonna go.
Can we clarify that point, whether their, Curling Club is going to sell full liquor or not sell full liquor?
Can you speak to that, Kevin?
In my prior comments, if I led you to believe that we were limiting our offerings to beer and wine and cider, that was not my intention. We could well, as a matter of fact, I do know several members who would prefer to have some kind of liquor available. It's simply a different path, I'm not saying we won't do it, there's no way we won't do it. This is actually the guy, Kevin Query, who does most of this work for us.
Yeah, so, as far as liquor goes, at tournaments that we've had thus far, we've always had liquor. We do serve liquor at, at tournaments, we observe it, we, you can at night, for our regularly scheduled leagues and members, we will have liquor available, but we are gonna do this in phases, because we're trying to somewhat have a smart plan to dispense alcohol. We want to make sure that all of our alcohol is dispensed in a reasonable manner, but at, at, we do have liquor in our plans. We do have a setup with the MLCC in order to order liquor, so we have the opportunity to order it in bottles and we can serve it. We have to keep it locked up and we have those facilities available, so we will have the plan on serving liquor.
So, you have the tip serve, but those are all your members that are volunteering to do the tip serve, am I correct?
Correct. They're not allowed to drink or consume while on service, so to speak. So, when we do an event, so like, for example, a tournament for our Bonn Spiel, we serve with bartenders. We have a bar set up, people check IDs, we dispense the alcohol, liquor, beer, cider from the machine. They can have access to the machine, there will be no self-service at public events. That's why we got this system, because it enables, when we have member nights, we can still check IDs, we still have to check IDs by law, even if we're their members, they still have to check IDs. But then when we have an event, it enables us to use it like a conventional bar with bartenders. And that's something that was not mentioned in the previous, but we, we, we do have an intent to serve liquor and enable it to anybody in the public that can come. So, even on a Wednesday night, Tuesday night, if a member wants, from the public wants to come out and have a beer and watch, yeah, that's allowed. So, we'll check their IDs, they walk in, hey, I want a beer, great, check their ID, and then they can pour by the ounce. The only reason we're really doing the self-serve system is that then we can charge people by the ounce. We're not having to inventory that every month, every week. It's all electronically, we have all electronic records of every ounce of, of alcohol that's been served out of our, out of our facility. The MLCC likes that, because then anything that's ordered, if we ordered five hundred ounces of Budweiser or whatever locals like technically, we can show where five hundred ounces went down to the person. It's not something that is to just anybody. So, no twenty-one year old could, or under twenty-one year old could be served, because every single ounce is tracked, so.
Are you guys serving food?
We're not serving food, we don't have any plans right now, we have a catering kitchen, so anybody who, any member of the public that wants to come in and, or it's really reserved for members right now, but any member of the public, if somebody wants to hold an event for the public, we have a catering kitchen that's designed to have a limited food service.
So, it leans me back to what Denise said, and I didn't think about that, the class C is for a full-blown and people going in to just eat and enjoy and, and do that. And then the other concern I have is, we don't have a contractual agreement about this escrowed liquor license. It's just in writing that they put down, I mean, if, if we were to award this to the Curling Club, I would like to pen the awarding on talking to the Mi- Michigan Liquor Control to see if they can escrow that back to us before we take this statement as true. And I'd like to see it contractually written out, instead of just in the bottom of a writing.
I don't think you can, I really don't think you can.
I, I don't know.
Yeah, it's a gray area, very much.
I, I guess I'm a little confused, okay? So, if I'm not a member of the Curling Club and I go in cuz I wanna watch somebody play, and I wanna go have a drink, is it gonna be liquor that I can get?
There will be liquor, yes.
In those dispensaries?
Not in, not in the actual tap system, but under our tap system, we have shelves. So, if you want some Glen Levitt, come on down, we'll have some.
I don't even know if they do. Oh, no, no thank you.
It's a Scottish sport, sorry.
Thank you. Okay.
So, we will have.
Not serving food?
Not serving food. But if you wanna bring a pizza, if you wanna have a pizza party, we have a what, we have a pizza oven, a warming oven.
But the Dog Park does serve food?
Right.
Chris?
Can you remind us what other tenants you may have in the future? So, you, you've gone into this dilapidated building, you revitalized it, you are improving other spaces and you're gonna be leasing it out and bringing in other commercial businesses that are public and go.
Yep.
Visit, buy things?
So, we have the Traverse City Symphony Orchestra, who's, has a letter of intent and takes some space. I believe they're coming in front of the planning commission to get site approval for that. We have a retailer in the center portion of our building that has submitted a letter of intent. And then we have a automated sports, a, basically a practice area for golf in a portion of our facility that's automated, hands-off, so no alcohol served there. So, no other alcohol served on, on premises, just that, just in the Curling Club. And that's the licensed area per MLCC.
And this, the Curling Club's been open about a year, roughly?
No, since January, first week of February, last week of January.
Okay, and then how long has it been since you sat down around a table and concocted the plan?
For alcohol?
No, just for the Curling Club and your whole vision.
We have a board meeting every month.
But probably started a year and a half ago roughly with the planning?
Three years of planning.
Okay.
Five years of planning, that's the original president who started it.
Center Ice?
Yeah, Matt Center Ice.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Kevin. Certainly.
Wanted to offer a point of clarification on something important. So, as we spoke to a liquor lawyer, the way we understand it is class C is apparent, and so the allotments that the township has given, tavern license like beer and wine falls under that same allotment? There's no separate ability to get a tavern license outside of, of this class C. So, just wanted to be clear on that, and yes, we, we're planning food options, I heard you kind of talked about.
But the club license is available outside of the class C.
I believe it's just how do you define the club? Is it, are they yearly memberships or monthly memberships, I mean, was there a?
Right, what's the? Daily, daily, weekly, monthly?
I don't, I can't speak to that with any certainty. It's, it's tricky, thank you. But I like all three concepts.
Oh, yeah, I do too.
Can you cut it in thirds? Think you all pick a day of the week to sell?
Maybe you guys could all get into the Kmart building. You know, it's a, I, I appreciate what the Curling Club has done so far. I mean, they have brought some new life into the old Cherryland Mall. I mean, it's, it is developing, it's taken off, it is, I think, good things are happening there and they were at the core of it. And I'd love to help them along their way, I, I think the, you know, the High Top is a, a dream and you guys have been working on it, and it's not a, it's not just a flight of fancy at this point in time.
Again, another building that's going downhill too.
Yep. And then, it's funny because many times John has said, you know what we need is an indoor dog park. Here it is, we have the, all three of these options.
They're all good options, I mean.
They are, and they're all so different.
Well, I'm, like I said in my comment, Chuck, is, I'm looking at the residents of the township itself. Not everybody's into curling, not anybody's into dogs, but I'm sure everybody's into going out to eat too, though.
You're saying we're a bunch of drinkers up here?
I didn't say that.
I have a question for John, are there any, is there anything else that's available that you know of?
Well, I, you know, that, one of the, I don't really know how liquor licenses work, but I was just wondering, are there other options out there that are available? I know there's like redevelopment licenses and so forth, and I, I know those are based on how much investment is made in locations, but, cuz I, I agree, there's, these are three great proposals and, and it's great to see them in the township here and we wanna keep them all in the township and be successful, but I'm just trying to wonder if there's some other options. I feel like it's we're picking winners and losers and it, and I look at, at somewhere like within the city where it just seems like there's places popping up all the time and, and I realize there's a variety of different types of mechanisms to accommodate that, but I'm just wondering if there, are there any other options out there beyond the one class C that's available to the township?
So, the city has the redevelopment resort licenses, so.
They can have as many as they want?
It's not as many as they want, but it's more than they'd ever wanna do. They can, I think, have two hundred of those. So, anybody who has, like the, you know, a sandwich shop can have a liquor license. A cigar bar can have a liquor license. It, it is, it's allowed, a lot of that, their hours are shorter than a regular class C. But it's, and they have a lot of class C licenses as well. I, I do think there's a, a good possibility that there's a club license available for the Dog Park. I, I wish I knew more about that at this point. For me, it comes down to High Tops or the Curling Club, as I said there. I think the Curling Club is going to be there. I think they've invested heavily already, and they are, I think, moving in the direction, if there's a little more development at the Cherryland Mall, it'll qualify for the resort development license, which would mean it would open up more people within that entire complex. But I don't know how far away. I think it's, is it a, investment is like a million dollars per thousand population? Is that the trigger, do you remember?
Yeah, something tied back to population and how much investment is made in a certain location over a certain period of time as well. I'm just wondering if that could apply to that, because we do have some other activity going on there as well. There has been with the construction of some of the outlots with the Wendy's that went in, the couple of coffee shops, we also have another one that's approved, it's an outlot at the Curling Center that's going to go in, it's a commercial building. So I just wondered if that threshold could be met through that process.
What about the Burger King, tore down and rebuilt? If that would count?
I don't, it may, I don't know.
Look, it's, I think it's a district area that's defined, and it's based on how much investment within a certain time period, and I don't know if that would qualify or not, but certainly some of the more recent ones, and then also some of the ones that have been approved that haven't been constructed yet.
Is it a matter of an application for the township to have a resort development district, or?
It's, it's a dollar amount that triggers it.
It's just a dollar?
A dollar amount of investment.
Well, if you look at that whole site, there's definitely that, I mean, millions of dollars-
The potential's there, yeah.
Gone into those, into the Wendy's and the Burger King and everything that's around it, plus what the Curling Club has done. I don't think it, or would, do you think it might be specific to those four walls?
Quite honestly, I don't know enough information beyond just-
It's all of downtown Traverse City.
Yeah.
And I think it extends into the Commons. So it's a-
We need some of those.
Yeah, it doesn't extend into Garfield Township. Chris?
I just didn't know from the past that there's liquor licenses that are available throughout the state that you can buy, and just have them relocated to different addresses in our county at a cost. And I think the restrictions are like distance, like you can only have a certain, you know, Class C has to be like 10 miles away from another one. So that was quite a while ago that I was involved in that, but I don't know if things have changed.
It's had to have changed, because you look at Buffalo Wild Wings when Jonathan B. Bug was there. That's not 10 miles, so that had, that has, to have had changed.
They do, they don't do it like you can throw a stone to the building, it's weird. They actually go out to the road and around.
Still not 10 miles.
Yeah, and maybe it's less than that, and maybe they were different licenses as well.
Yeah, Ex-Golf has a liquor license right next to Buffalo Wild Wings.
Yeah.
Olive Garden Red Lobster?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I feel awkward at this point, but I would like to kick this forward two more weeks so we can gather some more information.
And you can find out about what you were talking about with the-
Yeah.
Okay.
Resort development.
Because if the resort development, if that's the case, then we, and we can do that, the Curling Club can automatically get one.
At some point.
Right, and then the other Class C could go to one of the other two, if that's, if that's what we can do.
Yeah, we would need to find out how exactly, how it's defined and-
Can we find out within two weeks, and then make a decision on this in two weeks?
Yeah, as I said, I think there may be a way to form a club around the dog park, indoor dog park.
So we could find out about them, if they could get a club license.
Allow them the beer and wine license, which they are, that's all they really want.
Right, because they're beer, wine, and cider. And then if the other way goes, and the Curling Club could get theirs, and then we have that one left, and that could go to High Tops, so everybody would get what they're asking for, basically.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we table it for two weeks.
Okay. I second it.
Yeah.
Have a motion and a second?
Yeah.
Comments or questions?
I think it's a good idea because we're all kind of have different opinions, and I feel like nobody would make a motion and it wouldn't pass. So I think doing a little bit more homework on what we can do to help them from a township makes the most sense.
Yeah, if we can, like I said, that we can do it the way we did, with a club license and, what is that other license? At the-
Resort development.
And get that one, and then if they can, then we have one liquor license left, they could go to High Tops, and then everybody could possibly get one. We'd be all happy.
All right. Do we do have a motion on the floor? Are there any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes?
Two weeks.
Sorry to delay for another two weeks, but I hope, hopefully we'll have happy news for everybody. Thank you. Next item is consideration of establishing rates and charges pursuant to the Charter Township of Garfield Water Ordinance Number 13, Resolution 202322-T. So here we are asking to adopt a resolution to establish the rates that have always been set by ordinance in the past. And we have left a blank. We have left a blank under the rate. Right now, the rate is $11.50.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Our consultant was recommending somewhere in the neighborhood of a $5 a month increase.
It's $11.50 right now?
Yes. Which is probably $7 to $10 lower than everybody else.
At $16.50?
Yeah, no, at, at $11.50.
How much lower, I'm sorry?
Somewhere in the neighborhood of $7 to $10, some places are $40 a month.
Why don't we go $17?
Well-
Make it even.
What does our, what do they recommend, I'm sorry?
She's recommending-
$16.50?
She was recommending basically $16.50, $17.
Okay.
But she offered the idea that we might want to do it at a dollar a year, so there's no blowback, but as I said, the Peninsula Township is in a very similar situation, and they just went right to the amount that was recommended.
Yeah.
All the people care about out there is wineries.
Yeah, and we're 11 right now, even?
11.50.
11.50, okay.
17?
So you're almost going to double.
From 11.50 to 17?
17?
No, that's-
That's only-
Another half.
$5.50.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's only 25%.
It's a 50% increase.
Can I make a motion that we do it $17?
Yeah, yes, you can. We can, we can have discussion after the motion.
One housekeeping issue on there. And that is under daycare, adult of child.
Or is that or child?
Under the schedule of residential benefits?
Daycare center, adult of child.
Should be or, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
That would be a typo.
I had a question on that list.
Yeah.
I don't know that it involves anybody like that, but what if water ever runs by my farm and I have to hook up to it? What's agricultural under? I didn't see any of that. Or livestock operation, I mean, I, I think I'll be gone before the water goes by my house, but I don't know that.
You don't have to unless you make a change.
So I don't, I'm looking at the categories going, I don't see farming or... I just was throwing that out there, because we don't have that category.
Well, one thing is that we can, in the future, we can change the table by resolution.
Okay.
So if there is a need, we can do it quickly. Before, we would have to have a public hearing in order to change the law.
So we'll worry about it in a resolution at the time of when it's needed.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
But it's not required.
It gives us a little more flexibility.
Even if the water goes by your place, unless you make a change, or-
Right.
Or you build a new house, or you do something else, then you have to hook up, but his existing-
But if his wall goes out, he has to hook up.
But I would argue the fact from a veterinarian, and I'd get Michigan State involved, that I would need to have my water well, because horses will turn their noses up at community water.
They do not like the chlorine.
They do not like the smell. We go to horse shows, we struggle with it every time. They don't like it, they'll literally not drink. So anyways, I just thought I'd bring that up, I didn't see it.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good question.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-22-T, Resolution establishing rates and charges pursuant to the Charter Township Garfield Water Ordinance Number 15, which includes use charges of $17 for the monthly minimum charge.
Yeah, we have, we have a motion and support to adopt the resolution with the $17 in the blank for the monthly minimum charge.
Discussion?
Questions?
Our consultant recommended $16.50.
She recommended-
$16.50?
Yeah, I think $16.50 was her recommendation.
Do you want me to change my motion? I just thought-
No, it's fine. I mean, it's not a, it is a, just, I think, well, we can talk to Jennifer, she will be happy to reflect on what is happening with costs.
What do you think, Jennifer?
Do you want me to wait till public here?
No, come on up right now.
Yeah, I'm so antsy.
She has ants in her pants.
That's right, you like to talk about water.
I do, well, I like to talk about alcohol, too. A couple things, so Dawn Lund with UFS, yes, she recommended just under $5 was the, was the targeted number. But I, I definitely want to encourage you guys, looking at all of the other townships in the area, and at $16.50, $16.50 or $17, you guys are still by far the cheapest. I, well, don't quote me as being the cheapest, but still on the very low end for user rates. And as you guys know, with the drinking water revolving loan that we did submit, I mean, we have some very large capital improvement projects that we need to start planning for and funding for, so I commend you guys for wanting to be aggressive in raising it to $16.50 or $17 now rather than staging it. And I think the blowback that supervisors alluding to, the DPW will hear the complaints, because they're the ones that sell out, send out the billing rates. But you guys haven't raised your rates in the 20 years I've worked with you guys. I mean, please keep that in mind, they've always been, have, have we raised them, Chuck? I don't-
They've been $11.50 as long as I can remember.
Yeah, same here. So I mean, jumping up to $17 or around there is still a lot lower than what anybody else around here is paying. And then planning for our capital improvement projects, a comment was made as far as your house, Steve, right now? I mean, we'd still look at it as residential, so you'd pay a residential benefit fee. But then something else that I want to encourage you guys, and I know we've talked and had sidebar discussions, is to look at the ordinance, we don't mandate connections right now on water. So at some point, that's something that I'm going to continue to still encourage you guys to look at for updating your ordinance to mandate-
I forget what I-
With new construction well failures, if water is available in front of your property to mandate those connections, I'm going to encourage you guys to want to at least implement that in your ordinance, that would be the next step. Pardon?
Said if I had it, I would.
I know, exactly. So other than that, no, but I'm so excited you guys are looking at raising your rates, so thank you. Does that answer any questions for me?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Well, I'll give you an example, my sister who lives in Frazier, downstate.
That's where I lived.
Well, that's where I was born and raised. Her monthly minimum charge is $75.
That's high.
$75, plus she has to pay for the water that she uses. Their bill sometimes, her neighbors, like I have four or five kids, his bill last month was $350. Yeah, $350, because he have four kids and laundry and everything else, so I think $17 is-
Yep.
Good.
All right, any other questions or comments? To, to adopt the resolution with a monthly minimum charge of $17 is the vote? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
McManus?
McCumber.
Chloe?
Yes.
McCumber, McManus?
Yes.
Barshaf?
Yes.
Duel?
Yes.
Justinelli?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes. Motion passes. All right. On to new business, item A, consideration of a 2023 millage rate to fund the 2024 budget year. This is actually a introduction. So we'll have a hearing at our next meeting. Though I'm not quite sure why that's under new business, we typically put those on the consent calendar. But I would look for a motion to hold a public hearing on our millage rate at our first meeting in September, which I think is the 12th.
I make a motion that we put it for public hearing at our next meeting on September 12th.
Support.
Have a motion and support.
Nope, can we go too fast?
No, I guess I just was hoping for some-
Oh, you want to have a discussion?
Well, no, I just, I didn't know if anybody wanted to give me more feedback, or if they needed more information for the next meeting. I just tried to provide it ahead of time in case anybody needed more information.
This is good, this is very good.
It's a great-
It's great.
Greatly put together.
Greatly put together.
So if anyone had questions, or-
I have a question, Chloe.
Yeah.
So you're, what are you asking to have the millage at, two mills or?
I, no, I don't state, that's up for you guys to decide. In the spreadsheet, there's some options, in the yellow, kind of the middle box, there's 1.9, 1.85, so it kind of illustrates if we lower to those millages, what effect that would have on the revenue, it's kind of in that second to the last column, the tax, just the tax revenue. And then what effect that would have on our fund balance. Now, this is a really hard number to nail down, because there's so many factors, but I tried to find an average. And so kind of if you are more comfortable with just adding less to our fund balance, I would recommend, you know, 1.9 to 1.8. If you're looking at not adding to the fund balance, I'd recommend 1.75. Or if you'd like to spend down some fund balance very minimally, 1.7. And you could even go lower than that, I just tried to be very conservative with it, but-
What is our fund balance right now?
It is at $10.4 million. And so each year, the fund balance is growing, and our revenues are far exceeding our expenses. And because of the growth in our township, our taxable values have gone up each year significantly. So since we last lowered it in 2015, we make $700,000 more a year in tax revenue than in 2015. So, and, and the board's done such a good job of keeping the expenses low, and our revenues keep going up because of our growth, it's just, it's my recommendation that we look at possibly lowering it. So it's whatever the board's comfortable with, I don't have a specific recommendation, but I didn't know if you guys wanted more information, or if you had questions before our public hearing.
I appreciate all the work you put into this, I really do. Very, very good.
And regularly, our audit says that our fund balance is way too high, higher than it should be.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, if you look at the very top, I mean, that's up to debate, who you talk to, but the percent of general fund expenditures, like our, we have a policy that says that we're supposed to be at 25%. And we're at 258%. Other, you know, communities and organizations recommend, like MTA has a recommendation, the, UOFM has a recommendation, and we're way, we're way well, we have a very healthy fund balance, so, and that's a good thing. But, but yeah, we, it depends on who you ask, but Chuck loves our fund balance.
I have a question.
I love our fund balance.
There's a, there's a couple of things coming into play. One of them is that we are rated on our, by the bonding agencies and so forth, if we ever have to do that, on our growth in our fund balance is a plus. If we shrink our front, front-
Fund balance?
Fund borrowance.
Fund borrowance?
That's considered a negative. It's, if we go over our budget, that's really bad.
So with this in particular, if we like go to one, let's say 1.9, we're still going to be increasing our fund balance?
That would be correct.
And if we go to 1.8, we'd still be increasing our fund balance?
Yeah, and I think this is very conservative. I still think even if we did 1.7, we would still increase our fund balance.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Before I make our recommendation on, on the millage, can we do a budget workshop so we can see where our expenditures are coming out?
That would, that would suck.
I've got, I asked the, all of the heads of the departments to give me their budgets for the year. I'm still working on the election budget for next year, but I can get that all ready if we can all meet.
So before our next meeting for the public hearing, so you want to have a budget meeting between now and then?
So we can discuss-
So we need to discuss the, the millage rate and our expenditures upcoming next year.
Just to put it in the context.
Because elections are going to, to increase, um...
Because of all the people for all the...
Well, yeah, I have to get new equipment.
Early voting.
And then the early voting is nine days of early voting. Looks like we're all going to be doing our own, so I have to, to, to have at least three people in the precinct at all times. So it's nine days of early running, which is going to be twenty-seven days extra that I will have to have, plus it's going to be extra training, plus extra equipment.
And so you will have that amount for us when we have this meeting?
Yes, I'm working on it.
Okay.
Subs and cookies.
I would like to say, though, when we budget, we try to be as accurate as possible, but we always come out making more money than we...
Yeah.
Thought, because we're very conservative when we budget. So I don't know if basing our millage rate decision on our budget is the best idea because we always end up with a surplus, no matter what, if that makes sense.
Yep, it does make sense.
But we should still have a budget workshop, for sure.
Since I've been a trustee, it's grown almost three and a half million. And I did some interesting math, this is, this is just completely odd, but if we didn't spend our fund budget on anything but taking it away with the loss of taxes on her one point seven, at sixty, I don't have my glasses, is that sixty-three thousand a year taken out of fund balance?
Yeah.
We have a hundred and sixty-five years of fund balance. I thought that was kind of, I was like, no way, and I redid the math again, I'm like, holy cow. But that's, that's if we don't touch it for nothing else. I mean, there's a lot of stuff like dog parks, e, election equipment, fire stations, whatever, I mean, that's, that, I just was like, wow, that's a lot of...
Billions?
That's a lot of years.
Molly?
Yeah, look at the other thing, too, is, um, if we're going to save a taxpayer, I'm not a mathematician, but I, I think this is close. If we go to one point seven, we're going to save them like fifty dollars a year.
It's not much.
And, and so why would we want to decrease our fund balance to save them fifty dollars a year? We can save them forty dollars a year and go to one point eight and stay...
Yep.
Even. So, you know, I would, when we are, when we have our public hearing, we want to look at that balance a little bit.
I would agree with you, I don't want to put it in a negative like that, but you know, if we go to one point eight...
I tried to present it with options because, to address concerns like that, so, yeah.
Well, your table is great, so...
Yeah.
No, this is really good.
Also, I mean, it sort of made sense to me, but I'm like, who knows, hopefully to other people.
Yeah.
Okay, but in between, you know, if you want more information, let me know.
Okay, so we have a motion.
And a support.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Barshaf?
So if you wanted to do this budget workshop ahead of this...
The twelfth meeting?
Yeah. That's in two weeks, is there going to be availability in people's schedule, is that enough time?
I, there's...
Kick this off to Sep, end of the second meeting of September. I'm just throwing that out there.
Just for...
We actually got...
How about next Tuesday?
Um, I have something. I'm good.
Twenty-ninth?
Denise is retired, we don't have to wait. We can do it earlier in the day if we want.
No, Chris isn't retired.
Oh, Chris can go, though.
I'm good, Tuesday.
Tuesday.
See, she's blaming me all the time.
Bless her heart.
Bless her heart.
And what day now, give me?
Tuesday the twenty-ninth?
I'm gone the rest of the week, Wednesday on.
Okay, what time do we want to do it? Since I'm retired now, right?
That is Labor Day weekend, right?
We typically do the study sessions at four, that's, everybody's comfortable with that?
What about you, Chris? Can you go any earlier or before?
It works, yeah.
Do you go earlier than four?
I can, yep.
Do you guys want to do like three then, so that we can...
Be out of here at six, if it goes three hours?
Yeah.
Maybe we won't have to have four meetings.
Yeah, three o'clock is great, on the twenty-ninth.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth?
Wait, hold on, let me, wrong month, twenty-ninth. It flipped to September.
Felt the September buzz there.
All right, so that's next Tuesday at three o'clock.
Twenty-nine.
Three P.M.
Got it.
And that's a budget meeting.
Right.
Perfect.
Awesome.
All right, three o'clock. KK. And on the matter of scheduling a hearing, two weeks?
Motion's ready.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion passes. The last item on new business is consideration of bids for repair of Silver Lake Recreation Area walking loop.
Didn't even realize you were sitting back there till everybody left.
Hi, guys.
Hi.
It's in your packet, uh, I got three bids. Uh, we're talking about the walking loop at Silver Lake Recreation Area. Has not been fully crack sealed, top coated since I've been here, it's due. You know, we keep that plowed and maintained through the winter so people can walk. And with the blower, it's going to catch those cracks that are now widened to like, you know, one inch or plus. So a seal, Black Magic, Maulon, asphalt, all give me bids to fix those twenty cracks in addition to top coating and reseal the walking loop, so you can see your bids on your packet there. Black Magic came in just under the other two. Both Maulon and Black Magic have done work for the township, I thought they've done, you know, pretty good job for us. So if we want to go with a little spit, I would say that's probably my recommendation is, um, use Black Magic. They did our parking lot two years ago, I thought they did a pretty good job.
It's holding up.
Yeah.
We had talked about that, they, they're going to actually fill those cracks in, they're not just going to, I mean, they're going to cut them out and replace them.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And then Black Magic will do that.
Correct.
Perfect.
Bad cracks, right, not just cracks, but the bad ones.
Yeah, anything one inch or bigger, those are all going to get recut, compacted, and a fresh coat of asphalt in it.
Okay.
Chris? Yeah, I think you just answered part of my question, the fresh coat, how thick is that?
It's just what their standard is, um, and both of them have been pretty standard on, on their mix, Black Magic and Maulon, it both turns out pretty good.
Okay.
I mean, this, the parking lot's holding up pretty good from Black Magic two years ago, it's been plowed on a couple, couple seasons.
Oh, you know what, I'm, all right, that's top coat of black, not asphalt.
Right.
Correct, yeah.
Disregard.
Like a driveway seal.
Yeah.
I would like to make a motion that we get Black Magic to do our bid, excuse me, our repair of the Silver Lake Recreation Area walking loop.
Support.
Have a motion and support to award the contract to Black Magic. Any more questions or comments?
I would assume they're going to replace the asphalt with the same thickness...
Yeah.
As what it is currently, okay, just make it sure.
And the walking loops, from what I've seen, is not as thick as what we see on driveways and parking lots.
About two inch, I think, is what those are, okay.
Probably below that standard.
Awesome.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Oh, I am on schmuckle.
Yes.
Barshaf?
I think it was Duel.
Yes.
Barshaf?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Gustinelli?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Derek.
That brings us back to public comment. Give our three public...
I don't know if this is coming or not, but I have a question.
You have a joke to tell, maybe?
We can ask other questions under other business.
Okay, I'll do other business then, when you call it.
Okay, now we'll do other business.
I have a question, have we heard anything about our road? My road? She's, she's pointing to you. I didn't get the email.
He emailed me on Blue Star.
Nothing.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think his email said he was on vacation?
You know, he, he was...
Who's he?
The...
Okay.
He was taking a two-week course in surveying.
It's just the fact that I brought it up two weeks ago, and I told people, because people in my neighborhood are asking me, and I said, well, hopefully I'll have an answer tonight. And I don't.
Winter's coming.
We tabled it.
Well, the thing is, is they want, I think, the, the thing is, is they're pushing for, they want to make sure that it's, if we do it, it's going to be on for next year. You know? So that's why I'm asking. I'm, I just keep, keep getting asked, be asked from the people that live on my road, and I... So what am I going to tell them? We don't have an answer?
Tell them that we are...
Working on it, just like I told them last time.
We, well, we had, we had, we added the idea that we want to put a, um, some dry sleeves in there for water. So that kind of changed it a little bit.
What are dry sleeves? I mean, I...
In other words, the water pipes will be under the road, while the road's ripped up, you put water pipes.
Right, will the water be there to hook up to?
I would, I would assume. In the very near future, we would do that, yeah.
So I mean, if I, if, if my neighbor says I want to hook up to water after this is done, can I, okay.
They put in, they put in a pipe and then they have, um...
Your what?
My husband's aunt had it.
A lead for each house.
Okay, all right. So hopefully in a couple of weeks, I can tell them?
I, as much as I like dealing with the road commission, they are not really good communities.
No.
It's, it's almost comical.
You can't predict turns.
Molly?
So a question for you, on the fire millage. Um, when Chloe did her nice report, she's got Metro at two point six. I know we did that before, and then we made up the difference out of our general fund.
Correct.
Are we doing that again?
It's an option.
We're, we're going to discuss that at the, at our budget...
Yep.
Meetings and all that, okay, because the numbers that we're using here are based on that two point six, not on that two point seven. And why we can operate...
This is just the operating millage that I looked at?
Yeah.
Not the, the fire millage, but yeah, if our fire millage goes up and our operating millage goes down, it kind of...
Well, you've got all those millages in here, fire millage.
Yeah, but, um, the, the only one that I was evaluating was the operating.
Separate fund balance.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a separate balance for fire, the fire millage, so that all of these highlighted in yellow are all the communities' operating millage, which is just operate the township, the employees.
Right.
It's not fire.
Right, but in, in that intersection, you got all the fire and the...
Oh, yeah. But a lot of them have a separate police, um...
Yeah.
And we don't.
It's on this table.
Right, okay.
Each, each township has something different.
Right. Yeah, and these are the...